Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Waikiki Neighborhood Board October 8th meeting. Tonight, Michael Brown is in Tokyo, Lou Erdechek is Washington DC, and Chad is unable to make the meeting tonight. So we will proceed. First on our agenda would be the Honolulu Fire Department. Fire Department?
Good evening. Captain Abaya, Waikiki Fire Station. Statistics for September. We have three cooking fires, thirteen activated alarms with no fire, one hundred and seventy-three medical alarms, three motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, three motor vehicle crash collisions, one motion rescue, and one hazardous material incident. Fire safety tip for this month has to do with your smoke alarms. This year, the National Fire Protection Association Fire Prevention Week campaign strives to educate everyone about the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. For more information and resources, visit FTW.org. It's all smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area, like the hallway, and on each level of the home. Test smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing the test button. Place all smoke alarms when they are ten years old or stop responding when testing. Should you have any more questions? Please email the HFT's Public Affairs Media liaison at hftnhb@honolulu.gov. Any questions?
Questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Board members, questions for the Fire Department? Members of the audience, questions for the Fire Department? I see none. Nobody online? Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next is Honolulu Police Department?
Everybody, all I would ask is that when I'm finished, I get as robust clapping as you did for the Fire Department. Can we promise that? That's... Good evening to the Neighborhood Board and to the residents of the Waikiki community. My name is Lieutenant Steve. I work here in Waikiki, and I'm also here tonight with Lieutenant Steve. He works nighttime. We're here to hopefully answer some questions and participate in maybe robust discussion if you have. Let me go over some statistics just so you guys can get a benchmark of where we're at. I'm gonna list the offenses and then I'll talk about the numbers in a minute. As far as robbery goes, this month, we've had four robberies. Last month was nine. So we are down in the robbery category. Burglary, this month, we had seven. The month before, we had thirteen. So burglaries are also down. Theft, we had a hundred and sixty-three thefts. The month prior, we had a hundred and sixty-nine. So thefts are actually... UEMVs, which is when people break into your car, steal things from inside, we had nine. Previous month was eighteen, so we're down in that category as well. Assaults, we did have more assaults this month than last month. We had thirty-nine assaults as opposed to eighteen the previous month. Sex crimes, we had two reported sex crimes, actually down from the previous month of six. The officers that work in your district gave two thousand two hundred and seventy-seven parking tickets. Let me repeat that. Two thousand two hundred and seventy-seven parking tickets. As far as total calls for service in the Waikiki community exclusively, patrol officers responded to approximately three thousand one hundred and twenty-two calls for service. Three thousand one hundred and twenty-two. And then the ATV teams at night, they also issued seventy-six criminal citations related to park and park closures. Speeding tickets, we gave out thirty-six this month. Thirty-six speeding tickets. That concludes the stats on this paper. I'm not gonna kid myself to think that I'm gonna be able to get out of here without any questions. So with that, I'm here to answer any of your questions to the best of my ability.
Mr. Murs?
Those are the great stats. Thanks for presenting that. That kind of lays out what it looks like, so really appreciate that. Any specific citations on noise that you have, or were those rolled up in one of those stats?
We don't, we currently don't have that category as far as noise. I think I was asked that the last time, and maybe that's something that we can attempt to keep track of as far as on the equipment side, because I think that was brought up last time, and I think I said the same thing. We don't do it. So clearly, if you're asking about it, it's probably something maybe we... And then we'll have an answer for you. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, that'd be great if you could do that, because obviously that's been an ongoing issue for years. So if you could break out that stat, that'd be great. Thanks.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, fair enough.
Go ahead, Mr. Jacob, whichever.
Yes. When you reported the number of thefts, are those thefts that were reported or arrests you made of people stealing?
So that's gonna be the total number of criminal cases generated for theft? They may or may not include arrests, but that's the total number of criminal cases generated?
I'm a little confused by that.
Sure, so somebody could steal your property and the offender that did that could be gone, and we make a criminal case for you, but we couldn't make an arrest at that moment?
Okay. Is there any way, like, you could in the future, distinguish between those versus incidents where you were actually able to catch the person who stole something?
So I'll tell you this. Statistically, just for thefts, what I could do is, next go-around, I could give you the total number of arrests that our officers have made for the month, if that would be something that would be helpful. Happy to do that for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure, no problem.
Daniel?
So I'm in possession of this document that I believe was handed out by Honolulu Police Department. September 2024, the violation that has been historically reported through these meetings is loud muffler prohibited noise. So this document shows at least for the month of September, there was zero, or the previous month, there was thirteen. So this is information that has been reported to our board for a long time now.
I'm sorry, was that a question or a statement?
Well, I think it's, to put you on notice, that this information has been provided, which is not what, you know, you said we don't track it, but here there's this document. You have been tracking it. So for the next meeting, we would hope that you would continue to track it as has been done by previous officers at these meetings in the past.
Well, thank you for bringing that to my attention. I think the question that the gentleman posed earlier was overall noise complaints. Sir, help me out here. Am I mistaken? Did you specifically state muffler, or was it general noise?
Yeah, just general, but I did see that stats on muffler, but yeah, maybe, I don't know, loud music or just in, I don't know if you have loved those together, but...
The way I took, and I say this with respect, the way I took the gentleman's question was overall noise, but you're correct. We do keep track of loud muffler, and I'm happy to make sure that you receive that information. Did you have any other questions?
Well, I would just follow up with saying in addition to what was asked for. You know, the more information we can get this board, the better. So if we can get noise violations for parties or for other you know, types of noise that we experience in this community other than loud muffler, then yeah, sure, more information is great, but we should get the additional information in addition to the information we have been receiving for a long time now, which is specifically the loud muffler. And on this paper, it says prohibited noise as well, whatever that may be.
Okay, so just so I understand, so you're...
I can give you this document, and you can see what information...
No, no, no. I don't, sorry. I don't need the document. I understand what you're saying about mufflers. I'm hearing you tell me you want more stats, as much as we can give you, and we'll try to accommodate that as best as possible. Happy to do it. Did you have anything else?
Sarah?
Hi, Sarah. Thank you. So I think we all saw the news about what happened in Wainai and how they are very short-staffed of HPD. And how many officers are you still short? Over two hundred, is that?
It's actually, it's actually more than that. It's over four hundred.
So they're still short over four hundred officers? And it takes almost eight months to a year to train them before they're actually on the streets, wasn't it?
So, so that's a great point. So there's a six-and-a-half-month academy, then there's a field training program, then there's a probationary period. I would probably bump that number up to about a year and a half.
Okay, so I hope that this board, keeping that information in mind and seeing what the other districts are dealing with, life and death, gunshots, I hope that we could maybe ease off until they have enough officers not hired and trained and up and running before we start. I mean, muffler versus someone being shot. So, and then finally, is there anything we can do to help you, just like HPD, because we always ask you for help, but we don't?
So, um, thank, and Sarah, thank you for that. May I call you by your first name? Sarah, thank you for that. As far as helping us, just support us as much as you can. And please understand, if you're critical of us, that's okay. We're always happy to improve. We're not doing everything right all the time. So we're happy to take constructive criticism, and if we can make it work, we'll do that. An effective police department has an amazing relationship with the community, which is why we've committed to coming here and actually kind of having the same people come here again and again. So we're good with that. And I would say this, how can you help us? I don't want to make this a political platform, but make sure that you elect leaders in our community that are pro-law enforcement and pro-law and order. That would help us quite a bit. Because let's understand and take a step back. The police department enforces laws that are created by elected officials. Those elected officials are supposed to represent the will of the people. So if you want to see a change in your community as far as certain laws and whatnot, my suggestion, how could you help us? Please make sure you support candidates that understand the importance of having a police department. An important police department that is not with their hands tied behind their back and is actually able to do good things in the community and try to make a difference. So that would be my suggestion.
From the audience, I've got Jacob that's been waving at me, followed by John.
Hey, thank you for coming back here. Appreciate your consistent engagement with the community. So on my way home from work today, just before I got in, I saw in the median of Alamoana Boulevard there, coming into Waikiki, just piles and piles of trash littered everywhere. I was hoping, you know, I asked for this last time, I was real hoping you guys could come in with some statistics, if you have any on littering or anything like that, because it's just, you know, for lack of a better term, you guys are our first line to help keep a clean, safe community. And just, people keep disrespecting our community, and they keep just dumping trash everywhere, all around. So if we could get some enforcement on environmental crimes and hear some feedback about what steps you guys are taking, that'd be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Sure, thank you for that. We're happy to be here. Thanks. John?
Yeah, Lieutenant, I just, my name is John Dootsmann. I just want to counter what the board members said. I lived through, when I graduated high school in New York in seventy-seven, the Bronx was literally on fire. There's books and movies written called "The Bronx is Burning", and they turned it around with enforcing small stuff, like mufflers and small crimes and minor crimes. That's the heart of our problem in Waikiki. We don't live in Wainai. My experience thirty years as a reporter is there's very little that police can do about murders. Murders are usually somebody settling a beef, and there's no amount of police that will reduce the amount of murders. But preemptive policing with the small stuff does work. But murders generally, ninety percent, ninety-five percent, involve people in a dispute over money, over drugs, over their relationship. There's nothing police can do about it. So to say, oh, we want all the police's attention to go to Wainai because they get the headlines and because there's murders, I totally disagree with that. Thank you.
Daniel?
So it's constantly heard that you guys are short, but how many officers work in Waikiki, let's say, right now?
That's gonna fluctuate between, we could have between ten and thirteen officers working in Waikiki?
And how much does that range represent generally speaking?
Uh, sorry, could you, when you...
But can you give us like a rundown on the range? So in the mornings, there's ten to thirteens, at night, there's less. What is the general amount of officers working at any given moment in Waikiki?
Sure, so let me kind of give a big perspective. Waikiki is divided into Sector 1 and Sector 2. Then we have the substation. So you're gonna have a certain number of beats in Sector 1 and 2. It just depends on if any officers call sick, if any officers needed time off. So it is gonna fluctuate. We generally never let the staffing get below ten. And then for full staffing, we'll be at about thirteen.
Is that ten per sub-district of Waikiki, or is that ten total?
That's ten total officers working throughout two sectors in the Waikiki Peninsula exclusively.
Do those, regardless of how many officers are working at any given moment, do they spend more time in Sector 1 and Sector 2, and then what is Sector 1 and Sector 2?
So Sector 1 and Sector 2 are how we divide up the territories of the district. Officers are given individual beats that are within a sector. And then we, that's just the easy way for dispatch to notify office to respond to cases. That's actually a great question. Sector officer, Sector 1 officers and Sector 2 officers can absolutely go into each other's areas to assist with calls for service if one particular sector has more going on that particular day than other.
What is Sector 1 and Sector 2?
So Sector 1 is gonna be from when you come over the bridge at the convention center. So when you come over into Waikiki, like, let's say you come in from the convention side or the print side, so that's gonna be the start of Sector 1, and then Sector 1, Steve, is it Royal Hawaiian? Royal Hawaiian? Up to Royal Hawaiian? So up to Royal Hawaiian is gonna be Sector 1, and then Sector 2 is gonna kick in at Royal Hawaiian and then proceed towards Diamond Head, all the way through Montserrat, Pake, and all the way up to the Lighthouse. The park, through the park, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tim?
Yeah, good evening. I'm in your stats. I was wondering with the problem with e-bikes and e-motocycles, I've noticed a lot, especially on Kaua Kaua, going down Kaua Kaua. Have you ridden any tickets for that? I see a lot of kids mostly on the e-motocycles. Every day I see it. They're doing wheelies down Kaua Kaua. And the other day, two guys did wheelies for two lights. And one of the officers was sitting at the Cohio statue in the turnout. And they went right by nothing. And they were actually speeding too, and doing exhibition of speed. Can you guys keep an eye on that? It's really disturbing.
Um, I agree with you a hundred percent. Actually, the challenge too, it's not just the e-bikes. We're finding that all-terrain vehicles, motorcycles that should be on dirt exclusively have been coming through the neighborhood and whatnot. And we've actually started to make arrests regarding those issues and impounding either the e-bike or the motorcycle that's being used. The other thing too is, when we attempt to take into custody these individuals that are on these e-bikes or motorcycles, there's kind of a lot of moving parts to that apprehension, as you can appreciate. We also, we want to get them, but at the same time, we realize that getting them can't pose a risk to everybody else in the community. And we're in police cars, and our mobility is a little bit different than something on two wheels that has a little bit better acceleration. So we are totally aware of that problem with e-bikes and the motorcycles that are coming through. We are taking enforcement action when we can. We are arresting for things like reckless driving. We're taking the bikes. We're taking the motorcycles, and we're gonna continue to work through that. But please remember, if an officer is on foot or if officer is stationary in a vehicle and they see a motorcycle or e-bike passing them at forty-five miles an hour doing a wheelie, it is highly unlikely that that officer is gonna pull a dukes of hazard, jump in through the window of his patrol car, and then try to catch an e-bike that's going fifty miles an hour in the other direction. What we do do is we do put it out over the radio, and then if there's officers maybe a little bit farther down the road, they can know it. So just understand this. Officers that see a violation may not be able to act immediately. So you might not see that officer do anything about it, but there's a high probability that that officer let everybody know what just happened, and then depending where the other officers are, maybe we'd be able to take enforcement action if the circumstances permit.
Other questions for Honolulu Police Department? Sarah, did you have something?
Just real quick, would it help at all if we got video and a picture of the license plates for like muffler issues or anything, so can we send a warning, or is there anything that we can do as a community?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say you shouldn't do that. I mean, if you see, if you see, and I mean that respectfully, if you see someone driving recklessly and you want to share that with us, we can always do a follow-up possibly. But again, it would be for a follow-up purpose only, yeah.
One quick question from me. As reported in the newspaper and on the news, we had an assault in Waikiki with an arrest. Is that part of the assaults on your listing this month, or will that be next month?
That would be what we have so far this month. That would most likely be next month.
Well, thank you for arresting the guy.
No, thanks. And you know what I just realized? I've been up here, kind of, with my vocal has been here. I didn't mean to not engage you, Fredo. I apologize.
Any other questions for Honolulu Police Department? Lady in the back? Please use the microphone.
Aloha, my name is Deborah, and thanks for the sector designation. I'm in Sector 1, and I appreciate the transparency in your, in the service that you're providing the community, and thank you. I do have a noise complaint as well, and I reached out to one of the local officers in my area, and he said that I could request a review or people to manage that and just monitor the noise in my area for like a thirty-day trial. Is that possible? And may I sign up for that in my district or my section?
Sorry, so no, so you're saying you'd like to volunteer to monitor the noise? Is that?
I don't know if it's...
That's something new to me.
I don't know if it's monitoring. He said that there was a program that you guys had where you'll monitor it if I came and identified it was an issue in my sector for thirty days? No?
No, so first of all, thank you for your kind words. Happy to have you here. I'm not familiar with that, as you've explained it. What I can tell you though, and I should share with the group, is we do direct and localized enforcement, where a sergeant and a group of officers will go out and do direct enforcement for things like mufflers, speeding, possibly criminal littering. So we do have direct enforcement programs that we put out. As far as what you're asking, I can always connect with you offline and maybe get a little more info from you. Maybe I'm just not understanding, and we can see what it is you're, what it is you're looking to do.
Super. I think it's that program. I'm happy to chat with you after.
Okay, fair enough.
My name is Deb. Thanks.
Okay, Deb, thanks. I'm Steve.
Yeah, Stephanie?
Hi, I just have a quick question. What for the e-scooters, you know, that are, look like razor scooters but are electric, that people went, what is supposed to be happening with them?
They're not, they're not even supposed to be on the road.
I mean, are they supposed to be on the sidewalk?
Not. Those, those e, oh, I'm sorry, you talking about, when you say the scooters, meaning those things that you can rent?
Yeah, like the two-wheels.
So they're supposed to be in the bike lane. If we're treating that e-scooter like a skateboard, that mopeds and those electric things, it's all supposed to be used in the bike lane and not on the sidewalk, because we have a lot of pedestrians.
Right, and they're, you know, much bigger and faster than a pedestrian. I wonder if there's a way to reach out to the vendors that rent those things, because they're all, you know, I live on Aloe A. It has skinny sidewalks and skinny barriers between the sidewalk and the road, so there's not a lot of places to get out of the way. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Sarah. Yeah.
Anything else for HPD? Where? Oh.
Hi.
Hello.
I am a bike commuter. Do about three thousand, four thousand miles a year in Waikiki. About two weeks ago, I was coming from the library. You're familiar. It's a rounded lane from Kapahulu to the Aloe A. Thirty-five miles an hour is just a suggestion. There are four lanes. So from the library, I was on the sidewalk. A cop turns on his lights. Now, from there is the fire station. I just keep biking, trying to travel safely as a biker. I'm very aware of people who would be running, walking dogs, elderly people, and I can go onto the grass. Everything was clear. He keeps chasing me. I don't know he's chasing me because, again, there are a lot of sirens and lights, and I'm in a dress in five-inch heels. I don't think I'm much of a threat. Consequently, he gets in front of me. I stop. There are three other squads that come. I am handcuffed. I am frisked. Cited for biking on the sidewalk as well as obedience to officer. I think there's a better use of resources, as the other person said, with people who are going way beyond the speed limit, and they're on the rear tire doing wheelies. Come on. What gives?
I'm not saying anything, because I'm not sure if you're done speaking.
I'm done.
Okay, so obviously, you're very passionate about your position, and I can't speak to that situation, but I think that being a bicyclist in this community is a challenge to begin with. It sounds to me like you're addressing the conduct of the officers. Is that where that kind of went? I just, I just want to know where we're going with that, so...
Conduct and attention given to what's going on. I mean, I was did I break the law from up on the Aloe A, from leaving the library to being on the sidewalk when no one else was occupying it? And him thinking that this was a concern?
So I heard everything that you said. The feedback that I can give you would be this. If you have an interaction with a patrol officer that maybe you feel didn't go so well, my respectful advice is follow that officer's direction. Allow him or her to do whatever it is they need to do. Once they've done what they need to do, you as a citizen have a couple of options. You can ask to speak to a sergeant and have a conversation with that sergeant about what just occurred. So that's one option for you. And usually, there's a good resolution with that.
Oh, there hasn't been.
Okay, so that leads me then to the next avenue that you can take as a citizen of the community. You can go to the police commission. And you can go to the police commission, and you can share with them whatever it is you feel may not have gone correctly, and they're gonna listen to you, and then you can share your comments with them, and then they can start something on their end. If I can ask you a question? You said you were handcuffed. Were you actually, were you actually put in the police car and taken to the station?
Um, I was standing next to my bicycle. And they handcuffed me. A female officer patted me down for weapons, like, you couldn't see that anyway.
Sure. So, again, I don't know the totality of that entire interaction. I can share with you...
And there were a couple of times where other people who arrived in cars, officers, said, okay, you can turn off the body cams. So it would be truncated as far as what happened during the total interaction. Shouldn't the body cams be on the entire time?
That's correct. The only way that a body camera would be turned off is if a supervisor is on scene instructing the officers to do that, so...
Yes. So, again, it's truncated.
So I'm gonna share this with you. You seem really passionate about your position. I would encourage you to go to the police commission. Share with them what happened. Let them investigate it, and then we can see what happens, because I I don't... Because I don't have the ability to either give you answers. I can only talk in generalities. So if you didn't want to talk to a supervisor or you felt that wasn't successful as a member of the community, you can certainly go to the police commission. I will tell you this. As an agency, we would prefer it to handle with you right then and there rather than go to a civilian panel. But again, if you had a bad experience and you're passionate about that.
I appreciate that advice. There was an incident several years ago where I went to the police commission. Very unsatisfactory.
Okay. So I have to ask a follow-up question. Unsatisfactory in the way the police commission treated you? Or unsatisfactory where you didn't like the outcome of what they decided?
The outcome of what they provided, which an officer... There are a lot of details here.
Sure.
But basically, he came to me, stuck his finger in my face and said, "I've been telling you for two years. If we took this drug dealer off the property, that would be kidnapping." So the statements they provide is at their convenience as far as the officers. And the resolution with the commissioner?
So those are...
Lieutenant, Lieutenant, could I ask you, since this seems to be a one-on-one thing, could you folks discuss this by the side door?
Well, I'd like to wrap this up here and now rather than continue it. But if we need to speak offline, that's fine. I would prefer in public view to just be finished with it right here. So then there's a record of what's happening. So if that's all right. Ma'am, again, I've given you the avenues. You can speak to a patrol sergeant right then and there. You go to the police commission. If you're saying to me that you're not satisfied with either the sergeant or the police commission, I say respectfully, I don't have another answer for you. But I am happy that you shared how you felt. And I hope that if you have interactions with the police department in the future, it's better than what it has been for you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Anything else for HPD? Seeing nothing?
Have you asked for a police...
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to suggest that I would ask for a police report. And...
You're...
There should be. They put you in handcuffs.
So just for the record, we do put people in handcuffs for our safety. And there's not a police report always generated. But if you got a criminal summons for obedience to a police officer, there's absolutely a report associated with that. And the follow-up question is, did you go to court? And what was the outcome of the court case? Okay. On obedience to a police officer, you have to appear in court. That's a criminal summons in lieu of arrest. You need to make that court appearance. No, there's no writing the court. It's you need to go to court. And then you can explain to the court your version of events. That citation was issued to you in lieu of being arrested. I'm just sharing that with you. So don't miss that court date. Because, and I say this respectfully, if you miss that court date, there's going to be a warrant generated for you. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have one more question I'd like to ask. Lieutenant, is it? I'm sorry.
You can call me Steve. That's fine. Yep.
I was just going to suggest if you wanted to do something about motorcycles doing wheelies, any Saturday or Sunday morning from 10 to noon, if you set up like a speed trap, you'd wrap all those guys up in one day. Because Milo and I sits right over there. And every Saturday and Sunday morning, they go wheeling down the streets like crazy. And there's maybe as many as 20 of them. And, you know, it wouldn't be that hard to get them all at one time.
Thanks for your comments. And I agree with you on the 20. I've actually seen packs twice that size at some point. So yeah. No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll see you next month. And you got your applause. Next, we have Dominic online from Board of Water Supply.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, I'm bad on the cold. So I didn't want to come down and get anybody else sick. But just real quick, no main breaks to report from last month. Nothing important to report, no projects. We are launching our 2025 poster and poetry contest. I'm not sure if you've ever seen the posters and calendars that we hand out. The contest is for grades K through 6 for the poetry and 7 through 12 for the art portion. This year's theme is the worth of life. And deadlines for entries are February 28. All information, as usual, on our website, And I'd be more than happy to take any questions on behalf of the Board of Water this time.
Questions for Board of Water Supply? Board members, any questions for Board of Water Supply? Members of the audience, questions for members of Board of Water Supply? Seeing none? Dominic, feel better, please? We'll see you next month.
Yeah, next month.
Next on our agenda, we have citizens' concerns. Not covered on regular agenda. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. I'm Carlino Giampolo. I look forward to the day, and it is coming, when this issue of way-too-early-morning trash pickup at 3:00 a.m. is resolved and updates such as this one are not needed. Residents have been impacted by this abuse for as long as each of you has been a board member, whether that is for less than a year or for decades. Every objection by the private refuse haulers as well as by the politicians and business leaders for not starting at 6:00 a.m. has already been addressed and solutions given. It is time to end the abuse. There is no justification and no excuse for this kind of abuse. This reality exists because of those who allow it and by those who cause it. One of the actions that each board member can take is to persistently ask the politician and business leaders who come before this board why they are allowing this abuse to continue. Another important action for the board to take is to invite those who caused this abuse, namely, the owners of Honolulu Disposal Service and West Oahu Aggregate to come before this board to justify their actions. The Marriott Vacation Club across from the Ritz-Carlton residence had their grand opening a few days ago. That is another example of private refuse hauler companies increasing their number of clients and revenues while not hiring additional workers that would end the early morning trash pickup. That same scenario happened two years ago when the 400-unit Leleha Apartments on Cohio Avenue were occupied. And trash haulers increased their number of clients and revenues while not hiring additional workers. Residents of Wallena Street today continue to be impacted by trash pickup as early as 3:15 a.m. This scenario will most likely happen once again when Target opens in the international marketplace. Power is the ability and the willingness to take action. This board has the power to play a key and pivotal role in ending this abuse. Residents expect this board to use its full power to assist them in creating a new beginning for our community. Thank you for your attention.
Go ahead, please. Yes, go ahead, please.
Aloha, everyone. I apologize. We thought we were on the agenda for a presentation, but it turns out we are not. So we will just briefly talk about a project that we are initiating February 2025. If it does require us to do a full presentation, we're very happy to come back with further images and so on. So my name is Marion Kadora. I'm with the Mayor's Office of Culture and Arts. We recently received a grant through the Bloomberg Philanthropies, a grant project called the Public Art Challenge. And we are initiating a project called Vahipana that connects various sites around Oahu with their mo'olelo through public art. And so installations will be various media. And we have two sites that will be in Waikiki. This is a mayor's initiative. So mayor is one of our project leaders in this project. And I'm just going to hand it to Ka'imi Kahikina, who's one of our partners, to explain the context of this project a little bit more.
Aloha, Makaku. Thank you for having us today. It's an honor to be in front of you all. So Vahipana is really important because it connects the community as well as visitors to place. Often, mo'olelo and the histories of place are erased, especially in this time. So we think it's really... It is really important to start to connect through mo'olelo back to these places like Le'ahi, right? Kapilani Park, for example. For me, it's an idea that stirs this idea of belonging. And I think it will inspire the community to also have that feeling of belonging to Waikiki with a deeper context and understanding of the place that we live in. So mahalo. I'll pass it off to Donnie.
Aloha, Kako. My name is Donnie Servantes. I'm one of the curators on the project. So I can very briefly talk about the two projects in the Waikiki in your district. One is by Koyakau Anthony. We're plenty moi and pakiaf, that corner of the park, the former archery range. So basically, he's a printmaker. And we're looking to use leftover. There are a dozen poles in that part of the park. And so we're looking to make use of those to display his work there. And then Brandy Nalani McDougall, who is the current poet laureate of Hawaii. She is developing a project called Aloha Ka'apuni in which there would be seven sites around Diamond Head Crater, which the last two images represent. So if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. I know we have... How much time?
Yeah. I'll ask to put their presentation on our website so you have a better idea of what it is.
It looks like we have a question.
Just a very quick question. Do you have a website? I didn't see it listed here, but maybe it's on the paper.
We will be launching our website the beginning of November. So we'll be happy to send that to you. But we can send further information via email as well. Any additional contacts that is needed?
Okay, thank you. And is this going to be permanent or is it temporary? And are you going to have some text or something associated with it so people understand it better?
It's a three-year project. So from February 2025, 2028. And yes, there will be signage that will link to the website to give context into the artwork, into the mo'olelo behind it. And we actually would love to host a lot more information on the website.
I just wanted to add one brief comment. The pictures, the images that we gave to you, we're still in the design phase. So these will not be the final images that will be used. But we'll be very happy to send a new draft once we have them to share with you for comments via email if needed.
Hi. So just to be clear, are you going to be on the next meeting's agenda? Because I would like to hear more about this. Is that Finley? Sure, Finley?
I'm sorry.
Will they be on the next agendas since...
I am planning to put them on the January agenda.
January, okay.
Yeah. And one quick question for me. Is this connected to the historical markers that we already have in Waikiki at various locations?
This is a separate project. But Oahu Visitors Bureau that is working on the renovation of those markers, they're one of our partners. So they're definitely in conversation with each other, but they are separate projects.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And I'll have you as you finalize on a January agenda.
Okay. May I ask what additional information would you folks like on the project? The final designs or...
Yes, that would be good.
Yeah.
Anything else you want on that? I'm sorry, we have... Oh, okay. Captain?
Do you have photographs of the...
By January, we will have Brandy and Nalani McDougall's project by then. Kao's, the Kapilani Park project, that's going to be in Phase 2 in May. So we're hoping to have a more developed draft. But we may not. So that we can follow up with, definitely.
I would like to see this on the agenda in January, too. Very interesting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you back again. Tim, you had something for community concerns?
Yeah, I just want to let everybody know tomorrow at Kapalee Hallie, they're having the city council meeting, 10 o'clock. Bill 50, which affects everybody in Waikiki, is second reading. That's the street closure bill. Right now, it's tentatively six street festivals per year plus a downgrade in just street closures. The mayor came out last Wednesday. He's in support of four street festivals instead of the six. So if anybody has any concerns or whatever, they can call in tomorrow and testify on Bill 50. We need to get this going. Thank you.
Thank you. We have someone online who has a citizen's concern. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, yeah, my name is Ed Springer. And I live on Kapahulu Avenue. And this is a fairly simple, trivial concern. But I noticed about two weeks ago, they Beiki Bikes took away the right-hand lane of Kapahulu Avenue to put up a permanent bike stand. And I don't understand how they got permission to do that. I think that they used to be up on the grass, but now they're actually in the right-hand lane on Kapahulu Avenue right before Cohio. And I guess that's my concern. And I was wondering how I can get that addressed.
Our mayor's representative is ill tonight, but we will pass that on to her for find out why. I know all of the Beiki bike stands are authorized by the city. They take away parking stalls. And they're all coordinated. So we'll ask Nola to find that out, why they're doing that.
Thank you.
Any others? Oops.
Is he still on the line? Yes? Did you say it encroached on the street or the sidewalk on Kapahulu?
It's on the street.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other citizens' concerns? Yes, ma'am. Please use the microphone over there. Please use the microphone over there.
Hard to get like video. You have to use the microphone. Sorry.
Hi, my name is Sheri Hauser. I work for the Hilton...
Hi, my name is Sherry Hauser. I work for the Hilton Hawaiian Village. And as you probably have noticed and heard the disturbance of our chanting, our picketers, we have been on strike since the 24th of September. So after four months of unsuccessful negotiations, we decided to call a strike. It's hard work. It's not easy. You know, we're out there in the hot sun. We, of course, disturbed everyone from hotel guests to neighboring apartment buildings and hotels as well. You know, we're, we're looking to build something beautiful for the community that'll last generations. You know, one job should be enough. During COVID, Park Hotel and Resorts, which is the owners of Hilton Hawaiian Village, took advantage of hospitality. They cut staff. So they're still working with, you know, 16% less staff, but yet were to provide the service to our guests as normal. These people are paying top dollar for, you know, pampering, and it's, it makes our jobs very difficult. We've been making constant excuses to the guests on a daily basis for services that are cut, discontinued. You know, I mean, there are broken restroom toilets, sinks, falling ceiling panels, all broken for years with no fix. You know, we're fighting for a livable wage, safer work conditions. We're overworked, understaffed, and undervalued. We just need community support on that, knowing that, you know, we've gone two weeks now, and, you know, it's, it's just going to be a daily thing. We're going to be chanting from 7:00 AM in the morning till 10 o'clock at night. We've got bullhorns. We're singing, you know, our hearts out. And we just hope that, you know, this, this will come to a resolution soon.
We're scared to come here tonight because of the noise we were making. We do understand that we are, we are out there chanting, but we, we just want to ask for your patience and understanding while, while we fight for the future of this whole community, not just ourselves, right? Because we, we fear that if they keep on charging the visitors more and more and more and give them less services, they're going to paint our brand here, and people are not going to want to come back. And that's going to be devastating for us because it's the number one industry in Hawaii. And the corporations like Hilton, they made billions, one billion in profit last year and gave it to the shareholders while working people like us who are struggling. Thousands of people have left Hawaii. And so, you know, that's what we fear is that we're just going to be going, you know, getting worse and worse in the community here. So we're just asking that you folks have a little patience with us. We asking that you, you can help us when we say, you know, please call the Hilton. We don't mean we don't care. Please call the Hilton. We're meaning please call the Hilton and tell them to settle the contract. And, and, you know, that's what we're asking. And we're asking that you don't eat meat or sleep in any of the striking properties. And we hope that we conclude this strike pretty quickly because it is hard work and hot out there on the streets. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, last time, Catherine, last time we got involved, there was a strike. The corporation council told us we may not take a position. So please, we cannot take positions.
What I'd like to ask, though, do you think that you could moderate the hours in the evening with your chanting and your noise making and your drums? Because we're sympathetic, but you're also affecting the lives of people who live there. Do you think you could make that suggestion?
Of course, we're trying. You know, we do have about 2,000 of us on the street there. So we're definitely trying to, to keep things, you know, what is it, um?
Thank you.
We do have, you know, we're after 7 o'clock. I mean, though, we do know the law says from 7:00 to 10:00. But after 7:00 PM, there is no loud microphones and limited drums. So we have made modifications in that. And we move more towards the beach and not towards the front of the traffic because we know, of course, we've got commuters as well going back and forth. And we, by all, no means want to cause an accident with what we're doing. So we do take it more towards the beach after 7:00. Yeah.
And unfortunately, you know, people say, why do we have to go out there and chant? We, we try to, I mean, we could be doing a silent protest, and we can probably be there for a thousand years, and we wouldn't get anything. So that's why we have to do what we're doing. So please be patient and.
We'd be on the police report statistics.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you, ladies. Any other citizens' concerns that we haven't heard yet? Yes.
I live on Koa Avenue. There is a restaurant. It's surefire. And they take up a lot of real estate on the sidewalk, so much so anyone with a wheelchair would not be able to pass through. So I'm wondering how they're able to do that and what the city ordinances are. It's Koa Avenue. I think the address would be 2424. I'm at 2450, and it's adjacent. So.
Again, roll for that to Nola.
And they set up, I want to say, at least three years ago, probably more.
Thank you.
So I guess I'm just looking.
We're referring it to the mayor's office.
Thank you. They're very good neighbors. Other than encroaching on the sidewalk, I'd love to have them there.
Anything else from the community? Anything else? Any other hands?
Catherine, did you want to bring up what Lou was wanting you to mention? I received an email, which I have forwarded to board. Street truck on, I believe it's Koa. And I'm sorry, it slipped my mind, but there's K Street.
Prince Edward and Koa.
Thank you.
Food truck, not street truck.
Right. And, yeah, that thing. Their smoke is apparently traveling into a condominium, which has 24 residents in different apartments. One of the resident's sons has asthma. And the other people have called and said, look, we can't leave our doors or windows open. We can only live peacefully and comfortably if we have air conditioning, which a lot of them don't have. It's an older building. And we were asking the gentleman to appear so that it could be made an appeal to our local government agencies. I will say that Tommy Waters has responded. And he is, he is working and his staff are working with this gentleman to try and resolve the problems. So for the government officials, I just want to let you know, this is a real concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Any last thoughts? Seeing none, seeing anybody? No. We will move on to the next part of our agenda. Speaking of street events, public events coming up Saturday, October 12th, 2:00 PM to midnight, Waikiki Fall Festival. Sunday, October 13th, 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM, More Than Pink by Susan Coleman. It's a Kapialani Park event for breast cancer. Saturday, October 19th, 3:30 PM to 6:00 PM, the annual Hala'ua Pride Parade. Saturday, November 9th, 2:30 PM to midnight, a Kalakaua Street Festival. Friday, November 29th, 6:30 PM to 9:30 PM, will be the Waikiki Holiday Parade, getting us ready for the holiday season. Applications for liquor licenses. After several years of construction, Target Corporation is opening at the, on Kohio Avenue. I don't have the street location, but, you know, everybody knows where the new Target store is going to be, former Saks Fifth Avenue. So they're applying for a liquor license. Next on our agenda will be the mayor's representative, but she is ill this evening. We have a representative from council member Waters' office. There he is.
Hello, good evening. Kiola Fisher with Chair Waters' office. I have some newsletters. I'm just going to go ahead and keep it brief. This evening, tomorrow, as Tim Gary had mentioned, yes, we are going to have our council meeting at Kapalei Halli. Few legislative items that we are going to be highlighting, of course, Bill 46, 2024, relating to the real property tax, or empty home tax. It's scheduled for second reading, as amended in CD1, tomorrow's council meeting. With regards to Bill 50, relating to parades, street festivals, and other activities, also scheduled for second reading, as is, I do also have a, we do have a courtesy copy, an advanced copy, of the CD1 that we're going to be introducing at the November Transportation Committee meeting. I'm going to share that with you guys as well. And I did go ahead and make notes about that. Stitch, when they went ahead and referenced the Koa Street surefire on sidewalk, you can go ahead and check on the encroaching of the business on the sidewalk. We do also have Bill 52, which is relating to the electric bikes. That is going to be scheduled for second reading as well. And lastly, we have Resil 24213, which is going to be a resolution that is requesting the city administration to provide and manage recycled, recycling receptacles at city parks and recreational facilities, as requested by the Honolulu Youth Commission through Hawaii, sorry, the Honolulu Youth Commission, Resil 24007, which was introduced by Council District Four appointee Asa Shimizu. It finds that the provision of recycling receptacles at city parks and recreational facilities would encourage the recycling of single-use plastic bottles and reduce the amount of plastics in our landfills. That's reported out for adoption at tomorrow's council meeting as well. Otherwise, I can go ahead and take back any questions that you have.
Questions for Sarah?
Hi, thank you for appearing in person. Sometimes on WebEx, it's difficult to hear, so I really appreciate it. So I have a question on Bill 50. I want to make it very clear. Bill 50, as we said before, does not decrease the number of street closures per year. And in fact, the mayor can have up to, we can have 20 legacy events per year, and the mayor gets six events that he can waive in. So we could have 26 events per year. And so one of the things I brought up to Mr. Waters was my concern that we're monetizing and monopolizing our streets of Waikiki. So for example, everyone who has a street closure event, they're supposed to give 51% of their profits to a charity. However, a lot of the parades actually have, I think, 10 years, the aloha, Waikiki Holiday Festival has given about eight or nine thousand, over 10 years. So what they're doing is, is actually to be in the parade, you have to book through their travel agency. So, and then you can participate in the parade. So I went and I finally found out how much they would charge if you just wanted to be in the parade and didn't want to use their travel agency. The number I was quoted was over $400. So can you imagine how much money they're making all these years off us? Because they are, they are actually, these parades, they're all like mainland companies. So we're not seeing, like, the income tax. We're not seeing a lot of the taxes that we should be capturing. And they've been able to avoid the percentage donation, 51%, which is huge. So do you know if Tommy Waters will be addressing that?
Question on Waikiki. Well, certainly, I did give you the advanced copy. You can go ahead and take any notes. If you guys do have any recommendations, we definitely encourage everyone to testify at tomorrow's council meeting, as well as 8:00. You can go ahead and make any adjustments and incorporate those notes into future CD1s.
So I'm just wondering why Council Chair Waters isn't here this evening?
I apologize. He does have other occasions. He did mention that he will be here at November's.
Okay, because it's been quite a, quite a while since we've seen him. Additionally, I have a candidate's forum I'm hosting tomorrow, so I, unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to participate in the, the meeting. But I did submit written testimony. I have concerns regarding Bill 50. I've shared those at the last meeting, and I've shared those at previous testimony for the Transportation Committee meeting. I wish I could participate. It's possible I might be able to join because we have a one-hour forum, but we'll see. And I, I do support having less events because I see it as, you know, it's clogging up the streets, it's causing problems. People like them, but then on the other side, it is, it is a safety issue. There's a lot of issues. So I'm, I'm not for having all these events. I'm for having a fair and just process. Bill 50 was pushed by somebody who was not registered as a lobbyist. I'm not going to get more into detail on that right now. It was by request. It's the way it was listed. I wish Council Chair Waters was here. I hope he's not avoiding us. And I have these concerns that I think others also have. And some people just don't know what's going on, which is why we're here. Sarah and I are the ones voicing the most concerns. So there's concerns I have that are ethics-related, that are procedurally related. I support a bill, but I do not support Bill 50. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jeff?
Yeah, thanks for the overview. And then Bill 53, just for clarification, I guess I should have done my homework, but that's the SMA. Does that waive the SMA for single-family residences? Or what's the specifics on that? It doesn't, it probably wouldn't really apply to Waikiki. It's not like we got single-family residents on the beach. But is that what that, that does, that SMA?
I apologize. I'm not familiar with it. Yes, it would be for the state postal zoning management, and it's currently been postponed at the zoning committee. But yes, it is for the postal. But it wouldn't, I don't, because you guys are a special improvement district here in Waikiki, this would be more so for the other areas outside of Waikiki.
And you don't know why it's postponed necessarily. I'll look up all that. I was just curious if any, thanks.
We have Amanda online. Amanda?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm just here listening into the conversation, here to support Kiola and Chair Waters. I just wanted to make a few points of clarification for board members, Worth and Misakian. The bill actually does reduce the number of street activities, specifically festivals and legacy events. I heard you say that legacy events were allowed up to 20. And the CD1 version that Kiola provided as an advanced copy actually caps the legacy events where they are currently at 14. So there won't be any additional legacy events moving forward past the current 14. Additionally, it does reduce the street festivals by three, from the previous cap at 12 down to nine. And that's really the focus that Chair wanted to, that's really the intent of the bill, is to focus on the street festivals, which we believe have a greater impact. Also, we've addressed the, the point of concern regarding Mr. Agid's registration as a lobbyist. He has, in fact, registered as a lobbyist. And I also just wanted to clarify, this bill wasn't introduced at his request. He may have been one of the folks requesting a measure like this for quite some time, but it's certainly been a lot more than just him, community members, other organizations. And I think most importantly, the administration asked for this bill. The Department of Transportation Services and the mayor asked for this bill. So I just wanted to make those, those few points of clarification.
Just a quick response. So I wasn't the one, you mentioned my name, Amanda, but I wasn't the one who was discussing. was discussing, uh, how Bill fifty is structured to, uh, reduce or, or what it's doing specifically in that area. I do realize it's intended to reduce to some degree. Sounds like it's just a few. Um, the concern that, that was raised by me at some point in meetings here and by Sarah, I'm a member of Sarah Worth, was that the, the process doesn't seem to be fair because it's structured towards someone who's actually on, on the board for the Aloha Festivals and all of these other events. And, you know, you're kind of squeezing out the other people that are interested to do something. So in, in that respect, and also there's a, let me, if I could finish, if I could finish, please. And also with respect to a percentage of profits that would have to be given from this, you know, whoever comes and tries to do a street festival. So it's just concerns regarding the process. Mr. Egid actually last, at the last meeting, we, we, or actually in August, discussed that he was not a registered lobbyist for this and that he had pushed Bill fifty. So that was discussed. Whether he was the only one or there's others, that's fine. I'm very pleased that there's people concerned about this. We're all concerned about it. I led a, um, a PIG for this particular issue. Sarah was also part of that. So we polled the, the neighbors and the, the businesses. I do support reducing. This sounds like it's going to reduce it just a little bit, but I don't support an unfair process. So hopefully that message is clear. My testimony is accurate and clear. I updated it today, so it's a different, slightly different testimony than previously to the Transportation Committee. And I just ask that, in all fairness, we, we respect others that are interested in, you know, contributing to the community, not just one particular group that's pushing this bill. Thank you.
Absolutely, and, and thank you for that. And we really appreciate it and want your comments and suggestions, specific suggestions for how we can make it clearer and more fair. Um, I, we do understand your concerns with respect to the one individual that you're referencing. But again, we're reducing the street festivals, the, the limit on street festivals by three. It's, it's in the bill. Um, if, and again, we, we do understand that it's, it's unclear. So the CD one version that Kiola's provided has been a complete rework of the bill to make it clearer and, and to organize it better in such a way that it can be better understood. But it does reduce the street festivals by three and caps the legacies at fourteen. It also reduces the mayor's waivers. Um, so there's a number in the, a number of, of things in the bill that are being reduced to ultimately reduce the total number of street activities from thirty-three down to twenty-seven.
Thank you. We have a question from Jacob.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you for being here, and I hope, uh, Chair Waters can join us here in the near future. His attendance is sorely missed. Um, I saw in the chair's newsletter that went out, I saw it posted on Instagram actually about an hour ago. Uh, a lot of the bills he's highlighting for property tax relief and whatnot. Um, and I testified and supported that a little bit, uh, at last month's city council meeting. So I would like to say thank you for keeping the push up for property tax relief. Now, tax bills are crushing out here. It's all part of the cost of living crisis, so anything we can do to tamp that down would be really great. And I would also just like to add that, um, I am glad that a couple of months ago, he put on the, uh, meeting for the, um, was it the Urban Core Development Plan? So, you know, that's crucial to what we need here in Honolulu. I hope that's making, um, its way through the process and that we can see a final product from that soon. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sorry, real quickly, um, the reason why Bill fifty was introduced this time around was because of the safety concern. When parades and street festivals close down the streets, paramedics can't get through, we have issues such as that. And so I, um, actually have to give Tim Gary credit for this. He gave the suggestion of moving our events to Chinatown or areas that really need events. They need people to show up and they don't have a huge residential um, impact or residential or hotel there. For example, when my auntie came to visit, we, she, I could not pick her up for breakfast or anything from eight-thirty in the morning until, actually it was afternoon because the parade ran long. So that means she had to stay in her hotel, cabs couldn't get her, I couldn't pick her up. She is, so that's also affecting, um, hotel workers. And I have to be very, very clear. I wish our vice chair was here because he's the one who pointed out, um, that, yes, the first bill, uh, it decreases the number of street festivals. But instead of street festivals, you can just have parades instead. So let's be clear on that point. It does not decrease. I'm glad to see, um, it's been decreased a little bit, but twenty-seven street closures in Waikiki? That's over two a month. If we really are concerned about safety, then why are we concerned about safety when legacy events close down the streets? Why are we not concerned about safety when the mayor waives an event? I don't understand. Safety's a concern. Let's get these events elsewhere and parade.
Yeah, Sarah, thank you for that. And you make a good point. We, you know, twenty-seven does still seem like a lot, and, and that's across the board, uh, including all of them. Uh, but there is also included in the bill a cap of no more than two per trimester. So we really are trying to balance the, the need and the want for these types of activities a- and the impacts. And, and we're trying to spread it out so that it's not every single weekend. And, and, and this bill is only related to Waikiki. So your, your comments are well taken. Um, we do really hope to see some of these activities move to other parts of the island, including Chinatown. Waikiki has seen its fill. There are other parts of the island that could definitely use more of it.
About to the point that Sarah was bringing up. We, as a board, have been addressing this issue for many, many years. And personally, I want to thank Chair Waters for doing what he's done because it, we've wanted it to be less. We wanted the people to make contributions to the, um, societies they're supposed to be making it. So I think any effort that he has made to put this on a bill is well worth it. And also I wanted to just thank Amanda because she was working with, uh, Mr. Parks about the boot truck issue. And your office was totally responsive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine. Appreciate that.
Go ahead. Uh, yeah, Board Member Greg is correct. Chair Waters has been to very few meetings this year. Uh, not going to wait until November to express my comments. Uh, for the record, I'm going to express my comments as if Chair Waters was here today. Another month will go by where residents are going to be impacted by the abuse of way-too-early-morning trash pickup. Since January twenty-twenty-two, Chair Waters, you have received over twenty-five thousand words about this issue from residents who were impacted by trash pickup as early as three AM. You have done very little to protect residents from this abuse. Honolulu City Council may be the only city council in America that allows trash pickup at three AM. This is an embarrassment for Honolulu City Council as well as our community. Are you willing to contact the owners of Honolulu Disposal Service and West Oahu, Oahu Aggregates? To let them know that this abuse must end? If not, then please consider resigning. Changes occur either on the path of dignity or on the path of tragedy. We asked you to move on to the path of dignity to resolve this issue. That has not happened. A much more tragedy must there be before you and the other members of city council take action to resolve this issue. I will send these comments to Chair Tommy Waters tomorrow morning, and I expect an answer from him and not a staff member, as it has been done previously. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Tim?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be brief about Bill fifty. Bill fifty came to the mayor's attention almost a year ago. I called him on a cell phone. I was irate. He agreed with me. So I'm going to take credit for all this. I kicked Tommy Waters and made him introduce this bill. There were no lobbyists, nobody to be blamed. You want to blame somebody for Bill fifty? It was me, okay? Rick came out on the Rick Amada Show last Wednesday. He supported four street festivals a year. On the radio, he said it on the Rick Amada Show. One every three months. He also supports any buddy that wants to have a parade or whatever to move it around the island. Adrian or, uh, Pam, the councilman from the, uh, Chinatown, agreed, same thing. We have many places we can have parades. We have Aloha Stadium that can have street festivals. It's a safety issue down here. When the streets are closed, paramedics, fire, police are restricted in what they can do. There's so many places we can have parades. Why do we have to have them on Kaua Kaua? We had a parade last Saturday that could have been held anywhere. But they decided to close down Kaua Kaua in inconvenience everybody that live down here wants to be down here. So there's confusion. Don't blame Rick Egid or anybody. I was the one, I remember having the conversation with Rick. He was down giving the speech at the Sheraton last November. It took him twenty-five minutes to get out of Waikiki that night. He was extremely pissed off. So that's the genesis of all this. I know people have been, been complaining for years, but that's where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Anything else for Chair Waters? Seeing nothing. Thank you for being here, Amanda. Thank you for being online. Uh, Senator Moriwaki's representative?
Aloha, everyone. Charles Zanotto on behalf of Senator Moriwaki. Apologies that she couldn't make it tonight. Uh, you have my report. There's a few things I wanted to talk about. Uh, she is working on that, uh, walkway that's in front of the Halekalani along the beach. Um, that thing is completely disintegrated and it's unsafe for people to walk on. So I just wanted to put it out there. Make sure you tell everyone that you know and see, like, please do not walk on that thing because it's really bad. Uh, she went over there to visit it and there's not good enough signage to keep people off of it. And so um, we're really trying to find a solution for that. Um, she is willing to put state money out there for it. Uh, I think there's some kind of dispute as to whether Halekalani is responsible for that walkway or the state is and where the high watermark is and sea level rise, it just gets all complicated. So, um, but that is one thing that she is working on. Uh, another thing is, uh, Waikiki Sea Level Rise Resilience Adaptation Project. I just wanted to put a shout out that they recently, uh, got an award from the, uh, American Landscape Architects on, um, the excellent work that they're doing. Uh, I know Mary Alice is on the agenda, so she's going to speak more in detail about, uh, what's known as RAP, the, uh, the acronym for that mouthful of words. Uh, finally, we have our, uh, community survey that we put out every year before session. And we do that so that we can gather information from the community and get suggestions for legislation. Uh, we had a lot of successful bills that have been introduced and became law just through people filling out the survey and having a suggestion on, uh, what to introduce. So I urge you to, uh, take that survey. There's a link to it in our report. And I can take back any, uh, questions you may have to Senator.
Questions for, uh, Senator Moriwaki?
Hi, thank you so for being here. Um, so I'm seeing the first article on here is about the Halekalani. But yet the Sheraton Waikiki is also disintegrating, but that hotel gets funding from the Waikiki Beach Improvement Association. They have plans to restore that one, which will be on us, the businesses that reside in Waikiki. So I guess I'm a little confused as to why one hotel is getting one treatment, the other, the other. And I do realize that Halekalani is much more further along and disintegrated than, uh, Sheraton Waikiki, but that is one of my concerns. And, uh, second of all, I'm wondering if the DLNR will be stepping up more for the other areas because I've said that Hilton hasn't received a sand dump or Derusi hasn't, although Derusi is supposed to be receiving one shortly. So that was, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, I think Mary Alice will probably get into it more on her agenda item, but, um, basically, a recent thing that has happened is, uh, the, uh, what's called the EIS, which is basically to restore the beaches in that area and create, um, uh, structures in order to sort of retain the beach and also to, um, be able to enjoy, you know, just actually be having a beach along that area. Um, that's been transferred from DLNR over to DBED, uh, Department of Business Economic Development and Tourism, which seems a little bit more of a, uh, more appropriate state agency to, uh, because they're working with the hotels there. And so I, I think it, it really, it's sort of in limbo right now as to is the hotel responsible? Is the state responsible? You know, who really is it that is responsible for rebuilding that area? The bottom line is it's unsafe and that's the problem. And tourists, you know, they'll kind of like, they'll go along and then traverse unsafe things. And, um, we don't want that to happen. So that's why we're trying to work on a solution for it.
Any other questions? Thank you. Uh, again, for the record, I'd like to, uh, speak my comments to, uh, Senator Moriwaki. I will give you my comments and you can give them to her. On August twenty-fourth, the Waikiki Community Pat- Patrols. Another said, end the crime of trash pickup at three AM. Honor residents' dignity. And a third said, there is no excuse for abuse. No trash pickup at three AM. We walked from Kapalani Park to the Duca Hana Moko statue on Kaua Kaua Avenue where a group photo was to be taken. As I walked around, Senator Moriwaki, she said to me that I could not be in the photo with that sign. I said, yes, I can. That photo appeared in the newsletter at last, at the last board meeting. However, in that photo, it seems that my face had been darkened. More egregiously, the sign that are representative of the voices of thousands of residents who are severely impacted by the way-too-early-morning trash pickup have been censored and the words rendered unreadable. Who censored the sign in the photo in Senator Moriwaki's letter?
Uh, it's not censorship that Senator Moriwaki putting out, uh, information that she chose to put in her letter. Yeah, I'm aware of that one. So we got that photo from Waikiki Bid.
Got the photo from who?
Waikiki Business Improvement District Association.
Okay. And that's how they gave you the photo, like that?
That's exactly how the photo came from.
Okay, so did the senator know that the photo was like that when it was placed in her newsletter?
Yes.
It's an important question. It's a very important question. Thank you. I'm handing him my, my comments. I'm handing him my comments. Thank you. We respect.
And I, I just want to point out that that, may I speak, please? I just wanted to point out that that meeting was about relaunching citizen patrols. It wasn't about noise.
Well, to me, trash pickup at three AM is a crime, whether politicians want to make it so or not. And there was no reason for that sign to be censored by anyone. That in and of itself is a crime. Thank you. Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you for, uh, making the time to come here today. Um, I would just like to say that in the past, uh, month, there's been a couple of, uh, um, negative reports coming about, about, about the. Thank you for making the time to come here today. I would just like to say that in the past month, there's been a couple of negative reports coming about the performance of our schools, specifically the continuing post-COVID achievement gap and shortfall and the quality of our state correctional facilities. For the first one, it seems like a lot of money is being spent by the State Education Department with uneven results, to say the least. So I'm not looking for direct response to that now. But you know, something to look forward to in the next session coming up is any bills to sort of enhance the transparency and efficiency of the Education Department would be appreciated. And then also when it comes to our correctional facilities, I think, you know, something that would better serve the whole state and especially this community would be having up to par correctional facilities. I think Civil Beat had something earlier this week, last week about just the absolute travesty that OCCC is and our overcrowded jails. I know no one likes to shell money out for it, but we really need to get additional funding for repairs and eventually a replacement for these facilities. Does the prisoners no good to have subpar collapsing facilities and it doesn't improve public safety? So please, as we, I think the budget's coming up for the 25 session, so please get, let's get some funding in there to actually repair our jails so we can put criminals away. Thank you.
Thanks. And, you know, I have one comment. I think that's a really good point as far as what it would be doing for corrections because we do want very good facilities for people who are in corrections to be getting corrected and right now they're not good enough for them. And we want quality facilities and it's so easy just to say, oh, we shouldn't spend any money on more prison because that's not the solution. No, that's not the point. We're not trying to incarcerate more people. We want to have quality correction facilities so that they can become corrected how they're supposed to and go on to be productive members of society after they leave.
Stephanie?
Good evening. Thank you very much for being here. I raised this issue last month with the Senator and now I'll leave it with you. I know she's taking a lead on the invasive species issue with her recent trip to New Zealand. This week, we saw the Department of Parks and Recreation take down 80 coconut trees on the North Shore with thousands more to follow because of the coconut rhinoceros beetle problem. They're destroying the coconut trees and, you know, Waikiki will be not among the first to have trees damaged because we don't have a lot of mulch piles, but coconut rhinoceros beetles can fly up to two miles and they will damage our trees. And I'm wondering if the Senator, one of the main, there's so many ways we could tackle. There's so many holes in our biosecurity program, but there is no prohibition on selling material or plants or mulch that you know is infested with coconut rhinoceros beetle or little fire ants. It's perfectly legal. I'm wondering if the Senator would be interested or willing to introduce a bill that would prohibit people from selling material that they know is infested with these invasive pests. Thank you very much.
Thanks. And yeah, she would be open to any, you know, thing that would help with biosecurity invasive species. And I know we had that problem with, was it like the Punahou Carnival or something where the fire ants got sold to, you know, they had an infestation in them and then they spread to other, people bought them and then they spread everywhere else. And so that's kind of one of the issues that we really want to tackle.
Go ahead.
That happened both in 2019 and this year. I mean, it's an ongoing issue because it's just been the issue of nurseries selling plants infested with pests just is not, has not been addressed. And now mulch with the CRV particularly.
Yeah, and I think that we really need to have things in place. You know, we don't want to be punitive, but we want to have things in place where it just doesn't happen.
Anything else for the Senator? Seeing nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you.
I assume, does Adrian Tam?
Hi, Laura here for Representative Adrian Tam. He is fulfilling his role as the Chair of the Culture Arts Committee tonight at an event, so I'm here instead. I can answer a little bit about, I did today just put out an inquiry with the CRV team about Waikiki specifically, asking what kind of preventive measures residents in the urban core can take to be more aware. So that is something that's very much on our offices radar. I know there are a lot of challenges with the Department of Agriculture in terms of prohibition and sales and movement of plant material. It's a very complex issue. Last session, there was a bill for that. It had some line item vetoes. So hopefully that will be revisited this year and that's something that for sure is on Representative Tam and our offices radar. In terms of DOE, the DOE is very aware of the post-COVID student recovery in our meeting this year with them about their curriculum plans and their legislative plans for last year. They did have specific bills. I'm sorry, I can't remember. They had three specific bills last year that they were lobbying for to specifically try to close that learning gap. And we can give a report about what they proposed for this coming session when it comes out during the session. A couple of just updates about what Representative Tam has been up to. Today, we met with the Army Corps of Engineers about the Alaway flood plan. There's been some turnover in the Corps of Engineers, but we should be receiving a quarterly report from them soon. And whenever we receive that, I believe, the city and county should be putting it out there in charge of the outreach for that project. We have a lot of questions for them and we've requested some technical meetings with the engineers who are actually doing the planning, modeling and design. One of the reasons that we called this meeting is because, as we're all aware, there are a lot of climate events that are currently happening right now. And we wanted to get an update on if they are including the severity of events that are happening in their modeling when they look at what is the plan for Waikiki and Alaway. And they did indeed say that, yes, their modeling is taking into account the fact that weather events are becoming more extreme. So they didn't have a lot more to update besides that, but they said there should be a quarter three report coming out soon. And then the last thing, also speaking about education, is the Lieutenant Governor's Office has the Ready Kiki Program, which is another pre-K preschool program that's opened up at many schools across the island and Alaway Elementary School, which is part of our district, our house district at least. They have been so lucky to have a classroom and Representative Tam and I visited that last week. It's wonderful. They are, they're going to be able to hold 20 students for pre-K and they are accepting applications. So that is everything I have right now for you all, but I can take questions back to the representative.
Questions for Representative Tam?
Hi, thank you for being here. And thank you for being here in person. It's so much easier to hear. And one of my questions, I have two questions, actually. One is when they're going to be dredging the Alaway again? And this second comment is actually, we have an elementary school right here in Waikiki. It's the Jefferson Elementary School. And my concern is, piggybacking off of what Jacob said, was the funding of our schools. I got a flyer from Mr. Representative Tam stating that he was donating, he was able to secure funds to organizations and associations. However, like for example, he's, he actually told us he's secured $200,000 for the Waikiki Improvement Association, which almost covers the salary of the president. However, I want to know what the other funds that he provided to other organizations. Did he provide any funds to the schools? Was he able to?
Yeah, so I can speak to that. This year, actually, Jefferson Elementary School declined any CIP funding. So every year around this time, our offices, along with Senator Moriwaki, we reach out to the schools in our district and we ask them what do we need help with funding this year, what needs improvement, and they give us a list and then we support them for that through legislature. And actually, this past session, the Jefferson Elementary School, in light of knowing that the budget was going to be really tight because of Lahaina, they declined to request a capital improvement for this past session. But we did, we do really encourage everyone to ask regardless of what the statewide situation is because it's important for us to know what needs, you know, what things are lapsing, what infrastructural issues the schools might be having. But this year we were able to secure funding for our other elementary school, but this year, this past session, 2024, Jefferson Elementary School did not have any CIP requests. We're hoping they will this coming year.
Just a quick question regarding the Army Corps of Engineers. Flood. Flood program that they're doing, like looking at the sea rise level. Is there any coordination with the Alaway Pedestrian Bridge that's being looked at and planned currently? Because that's obviously going to go across the canal. And then they're talking about building a wall that's, I don't know how many feet, up to six feet higher, you know, whatever it's going to be. It's a potential project. So is there any collaboration between the Department of Transportation, the federal government, and the Army Corps of Engineers, the federal government that's overseeing the Alaway Bridge project that has some oversight because they're bringing in federal funding, and the Army Corps of Engineers? Are you aware of that with any discussions with Representative Tam?
So today, our meeting was focused purely on the flood plan, which is what we're calling the six-foot wall. We did see some renderings today. We did discuss the renderings. It is not just going to be like a wall coming out of the sidewalk. There will be some gradation. There's going to be a raised sidewalk. But again, this is also in the planning stages. So if you go, this is actually a city and county and a federal joint project. We just requested an update because we wanted to be able, we've been getting a lot of questions about this actually in our office. And so we wanted to know what's going on, especially in late hurricane season. You know, I think it's important to ask these difficult questions as we see devastating storms happen throughout the continent. And, you know, we're very vulnerable in this district and the representative and I are very aware of that. And so we are trying to do our due diligence to ask these hard questions. The flood plan involves measures in our district, but also above our district, right? Water flows down from the mountains, so the project is still in the planning stage. And then if you go onto the city and county's website, there's actually a great slide with a timeline of how this process works. There've been a couple hiccups over the last couple of years with this whole flood plan project. And so right now they're still in the study and modeling phase with some amount of design, but they're still actually like in the modeling phase where they're talking about how severe things are going to be, how much water they're expecting. And they have a couple of sites. There are two sites above the H1 Freepass and then I think he said there are four sites below the H1 Overpass, which is like is over University Avenue. And those are all going to be various other ways to slow water, basically. But we didn't get to see any additional drawings or anything like that. The modeling and the engineering team that's actually working on this project are based out of Pittsburgh, we found out today, which was interesting. In terms of the city and county, the bridge project, we did not talk about the bridge project today. Our focus was on the flood project. I'm not particularly sure. That may be a question for like Tommy Waters' office in terms of because some of it is part of complete streets, right? The bridge. And so I'm not sure how the communications go between the two federal projects and the city. But I do know that today they told us the city is in charge of any constituent communications and outreach and what's going on with both of these projects. And so they should be like your first line of inquiry. Of course, you know, we wanted an update because lots of people are calling us and then we want to be able to give some information, but also refer you on to the proper source. So in terms of the bridge, we did not get an update about the bridge today. I don't, that's, yeah, that's sorry, that's, I mean, this is even, you know, sort of out of park.
No, I understand. And just very quickly, one other additional comment. Because you're familiar with the meeting. Did you participate? You were there also? So you were there. It sounded like you were there. So you mentioned about water coming from the mountains and then obviously we have water coming from the ocean. And so I just want to differentiate for future, we're not going to have this discussion now because there's no time. But we know there's water coming from the mountains and there's, you know, water rising from the ground if there is some, you know, saturation. But I think the the main issue is worrying about the sea level. Now, we've got a canal that's blocked on one side. It only has a one side opening. It doesn't go all the way around. Is anyone, was there any discussion about blocking off, putting the wall and just blocking off the canal and creating, obviously, you don't want stagnant water. You've got to have water that's kind of flowing in and kind of circulating for life for the fish and creating some kind of a piping system to, and the only way I can analogize is if everyone could just think of a fish tank where you kind of put a water, you know, the air. I forget what you call it because I don't have a fish tank, but it puts air into the, or oxygen into the water, but doing some kind of circulation system that's piped all the way down to the canal in and out. And obviously there's a cost to that, but we're talking about billions of dollars for the six-foot wall. Is that in any kind of a discussion that you're aware of?
So today, again, we didn't get any technical details beyond the last set of drawings that were at a meeting, I think, believe at the end of last year. Again, there is a, an update coming of, so the Army Corps of Engineers, part of the project performance is that they do quarterly updates. So there'll be a quarterly update. What they explained to us today about the timeline is that they have to finish this planning stage, which includes the EIS, before they can move into pure design stages. And then there's, they have to secure funding also. So those are the next steps, which it sounds like are not going to happen until next year. Don't, I'm, you know, I'm not exactly sure, but right now they're still in planning stages. It's very much still in the planning stages. Funding is not secured for this project. So that's where that is right now.
I'm shocked. I really wish our Vice Chair Lou was here because he and I both attended the community meeting sponsored by the Army Corps. And one of the issues is that people do not want a corridor basically on the Alaway. It's going to be six feet of cement going up on each side. So a lot of people who canoe here, you're going to be walking, you're going to be paddling down, almost like a tunnel, six feet of cement on both sides. So one of the ideas was, well, why don't we take care of it above the watershed? Let's plant, let's set up a little, gosh, sorry, I'm not a technical person, but there was, there are other means necessary. And the Army Corps did not want to invest in that. This would be a more like a solution that fits their timeline. So the issue was, the reason I asked about dredging, because that was part of the solution too. Well, keep dredging it. You got to dredge it more often because there is so much soil and so forth flowing down the mountains into the Alaway. And that's why the level's rising also. So my question is, the Army Corps said that they didn't have the plans for the final at that last quarterly meeting. And that, but they were going to take the suggestions and into consideration. But here we are, months later, and it's the exact same design. They're not giving us any other options. So when you say like, this is just a planning phase, you know, the other designs, we're not seeing them. So that is one of my.
Yes, so I have requests, we spoke today with the project managers and I did request when the time is ready to see, I did request that we have a meeting with the technical engineers because I am also interested in what we can do to move to slow water from moving from all directions. And I leave it at that, but yes, that is something that's very much on our radar. In case you need some reassurance, I have a very technical science background, so I'm, I'm, I'm keen on asking these questions and so is the representative. So I hope that provides you a little bit of an update on that project as I think, you know, water preparedness is on everybody's mind right now. We are trying to be proactive.
I do believe this project has been in the works over 35 years. The first presentation we had here had a 15-foot wall down the Alaway. I'm not technically qualified to speak on any of this, but I hope before I die that there's a final. I'm not technically qualified to speak on any of this, but, uh, I, I hope before I die that there's a final decision what they're going to do. Thank you for bringing that to us. Any other questions for Adrian Tam?
Nothing else. Thank you.
Governor's representative, uh, Yvonne? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I don't really have much to report tonight. I'm willing to take questions from anyone who might have. One, just one acknowledgement, uh, for the, of the condo crisis, the emergency proclamation, some information I shared with the chair from the DCCA. But the government or the governor's commitment to addressing this crisis. And that includes some information with the joint task force. So hopefully it's been shared with all of you. Sorry, I shared some information with the chair to be shared with all of you regarding the emergency proclamation and the joint task force. And more is available directly from the DCCA. Yeah.
I think I messed up on that. I'm sorry. I'll search for it again and send it out.
Thank you.
So just, you know, this is your time to brag about the governor. Everyone else like gets a report. This is your chance to like really showcase what he's doing for the community. And, um, you seem like a very shy, like I don't like to boast and brag. But this is the time to like, let us know what he's up to, what he's, um, doing. And then afterwards, normally, uh, the people answer the questions from the previous meeting, uh, if that helps.
Okay, I will try to come, uh, a bit more proactively in the future.
Sorry about that, guys. I thought I'd send it out.
So, uh, thank you, uh, for that update and we'll look at that information when we get it later. The only comment I'm gonna make tonight, we're gonna give you a break because you, you know, you're, you're on the hot seat and then everybody's on the hot seat sometimes when they come up here. I, um, I, I shouldn't share this at the meeting, but I will. I, I just lost my dad, uh, less than two weeks ago and somebody took me to go see the, um, the Clippers game, Golden State Warriors game. And I'm sitting in the, in the audience there and, and all of a sudden I see the, the governor up on the, the giant screen. And I guess he had courtside seats, so he's, I, I don't know if he's a Clippers fan or a Golden State Warriors fan, but, uh, I don't think he said, uh, and I, I couldn't see him with any kind of shirt. He just had a white shirt on, I think. But, um, I, I just wanted to say that was an interesting moment and I do appreciate what you did for, um, getting us some information. I'll take a look at it and I will communicate with you later. It's an issue that's very important to thousands of, of condo owners. And as I continue to do candidate forums for Kukua Council with our, our current legislators and future legislators, you know, that question's been coming up and it's front and center. And we've got a lot of issues with malfeasance and other concerns at condo associations. And we're hoping that it's not just the insurance rising, it's the, and the maintenance fees rising. It's, it's other issues that are rising to the surface and we need help. Own, I'm an owner. I speak as an advocate for other owners. We do need help. So I do appreciate what, what the governor can do to step that up a little bit more.
Yeah, I mean, it's part of larger cost of living affordability issue that's pervasive and at the front of his attention. And I guess, although it may not be, it's not boosterism, but I mean, since the last meeting, part of what's been garnering a lot of attention, of course, was the report, the final report on the Maui Law Fire. And, um, you know, it's kind of a damning indictment, um, for our major utility. So, yeah, there's a lot of major issues, um, in front of the state government. I'll try to balance these reports out when I come with positive and negative as much as possible.
Any other questions for the governor? Yes, go ahead, John.
Yeah, how are you doing, John Doosman? I want to, uh, Jacob, talk about the jail, O triple C. That is under the responsibility of the governor's cabinet, basically. I studied this for a long time. A lot of misinformation. When O triple C was built, there was, the population on this island was five hundred and eleven thousand people. Now it's like nine hundred and forty thousand. All the research shows about one percent of the population needs to be incarcerated. They're incorrigible, unfixable. They've been given every chance. They need to be in, in jail. Take that fixed percentage, do the math, well, now we have nine hundred and forty thousand people. We should have capacity for nine hundred and forty people. The capacity of the jail should reflect the population. It's a math problem. It's not a rehabilitation problem. It's a math problem if you actually study the science. I keep, I heard earlier about rehabilitation. Again, I know the lieutenant governor's big on rehabilitation. I'm all for rehabilitation, but there's no research anywhere in the world that proves any successful rehabilitation for people who are chronic incorrigible criminals. It does not exist in the psychiatric literature or anywhere else. But we keep pushing this agenda, oh, we're not gonna build a new jail, even though the population's, you know, almost doubled because people can all be fixed. And the talk earlier was, oh, we want to make it nicer for the prisoners. Yes, we do. Want to make it humane. But what about the population? For sure, so when somebody's in jail, they won't commit a crime unless they escape. That's one hundred percent. The other stuff is just political nonsense. It's been tossed around here in this town for twenty years. And there's no evidence that it works. Thank you.
No, but I think it's, thank you.
Jacob?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, uh, for coming back to us this month. Really appreciate it. In addition to needing to update our correctional facilities, uh, you know, I'm glad that you brought up the cost of living crisis. You know, it's just prices are getting so high here and there's pricing so many middle and working class families out. Last legislative session, um, we got so close, but didn't quite close the deal on getting, um, some legislation passed on licensing reciprocity with other states. I would really encourage the governor to get behind that coming up. We have a huge qualified worker shortage problem here. And part of that is driven because people can't move here with the skills that we need without going through a laborious and Byzantine regulatory process to basically get the skills they already have recognized. So I would, you know, I think it would really help the community if we could get licensing reciprocity to help fill critical skilled labor gaps. And the governor of the past few years has been making a big deal for housing and affordability. I'm encouraging the governor, go big or go home on housing development. Build more housing, get, do all we can to get what we can build so that way we can drive prices down. We've seen it work in other areas. There's a lot that we can do even here on Oahu to really maximize the space that we have. So I strongly encourage the governor as well to really go big on housing this session. Thank you.
Anything?
So, um, I have actually two concerns. I'm glad you brought up Hawaiian Electric and that debacle. And I don't know, I'm sure you know, but Chinatown also, they were without electricity for days because Hawaiian Electric is not, doesn't have the proper standards, you know? So, um, my concern is with the bridge, Hawaiian Electric, once again, is gonna have their power cables running on our bridge. So that's one of the concerns I have. And the second concern is I'm very grateful that the governor stepped in and encouraged the nurses to have a mediator, a federal mediator for the strike. As we all know, Maiki Teke, we have now a huge strike involving eight hotels, but currently they are focusing on the Hilton Hawaiian. Uh, my concern is that I think there's kind of a movement here on the island. People are tired of having to work two or three jobs so executives can have two or three homes. So what we're seeing is like one job needed. And I'm hoping that perhaps if the governor could, uh, once again, like he did with the nurses, perhaps, uh, promote having a federal negotiator to.
I'm just a bit unclear for industry specific or?
Oh, so the hotel workers are on strike. It's gonna be, um, seven hotels here in Maiki Teke. In my sub-district one, it's the Hilton Hawaiian. And, um, so they went on strike on September twenty-fourth, I believe, and there's still, uh, negotiations, there's just no negotiations. I mean, Hilton does have the money. They can probably wait them out. But I'm hoping that the governor, with his whole, uh, making Hawaii affordable, letting the people stay here, stay in our homes. I'm hoping that maybe as he did for the nurses, perhaps he can.
For other sectors?
Uh, for the, for the local five, actually, the hotel workers are on strike for that, perhaps.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Rick. Is that an attack train dog?
Unfortunately, uh, she's, she's, she's just a puppy. I'm sorry to have to bring her, but my wife's out of town, so I didn't want to leave her alone. Anyway, um, first of all, I, I want to thank the board for reviewing so many of these issues tonight. It's amazing that she covered so much ground. But, um, and Greg, I am a registered lobbyist with the city and I've been since January. In fact, it was last June too. So I'm not sure, maybe you weren't looking at the state site and can't find my name there. That's true, I'm not on state site, but I am on the city's. Specifically, and in fact, I amended it. When you made your complaint in August, I amended it to specifically add Bill fifty. As, uh, bill that was all.
It's because you directed that to me, just, it's important that it's specific to what you're representing, so.
Well, the previous, this registration covered all this ground, but as you would say, it is general. So when you made your complaint, I went back in, read and re-register and mentioned Bill fifty specifically.
Okay, a- again, we can, we'll ask you questions. I'll let you speak, but you're raising this to me and I'm very.
Because you're the only one raising it.
I'm very accurate in my assessment and I researched what I looked at.
I don't, no, you're totally inaccurate.
No, I'm very accurate, Mr. Edgar.
Okay, gentlemen, let's, we're not, we're not into discussions here. Do you have your report?
Okay, um, so the, the, there is a real question of, um, danger with the wall that faces. It's actually the, the Hali Kalani Wall and the area in front of the Outrigger. The area in front of the Sheraton has been closed for, um, Josh, six, eight years, five years? Over five. And so anybody who's trying to traverse that area actually has to walk through the Hilton property, I mean, the Sheraton property. And so, uh, we are concerned about that being unsafe. And I know that, that DLNR is looking at it and the properties are looking at it. So hopefully we'll get a resolution, uh, shortly. That is a big concern. Senator Maury Waki is trying to assist with that. So, uh, um, I hopefully will have something to report. Hopefully before January, maybe November, we'll see. But anyhow, uh, whoever raised that concern, I think that is a very valid issue that needs to be addressed. And, um, we're also, uh, still working on Bill fifty. Well, I will go down to testify. And our major concern was the street festivals. And Bill fifty re- creates a new category for street festivals because street festivals is the most disruptive because they close the street down from early afternoon to late at night. And so, uh, parades, sporting events, of course, they're disruptive as well, but for a much shorter period of time. And so, uh, we're hopeful that the law will be changed. And actually, I agree with Greg and Sarah, the procedure should be very clear and open to everyone. We had a real problem with this last year where one vendor showed up with a hundred applications. I want to be aware of that. And, uh, caused some real consternation in the whole system. So we're, it is a system that, that, um, the city is trying to fix. And, uh, as was mentioned earlier, actually, the, the Department of Transportation Services wants a bill passed to clarify the situation. So hopefully everyone will work it out. We, we are interested in the bill, but that, our interests are much narrower than all of the issues the bill covers. So it's, um, it's something we'll hopefully get resolved in a way that, uh, will be fair. That's all I have to report. I want to yield my time to the report from, uh, from D-Bet and DLNR, which, uh, they're on the agenda now.
Okay, uh, Sarah, did you have something?
So one thing I have to say is that I know there was a complaint before about how Greg and I and some other people, we complain at every meeting. I don't think you realize behind the scenes, day after day, week after week, we're emailing, we're texting, we're trying to get these people to answer us, to be accountable. And when it doesn't happen, our only resort is coming here and complaining. So I do apologize, but I wish you could see that the hours that we put in trying to resolve it. So we're not using neighborhood board time. So just to be clear, um, since you did bring it up, I actually am the one who first brought up the fact that you were not led, uh, registered as a lobbyist. And it was twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, and then finally you registered in twenty twenty-three. And my big concern is in twenty twenty-three, when you registered, this is the first time a commercial real estate law firm filed for you and they themselves filed as lobbyists. So just to be clear, we now have realist, commercial real estate attorneys registered as lobbyists for WIA. But WIA doesn't own any property. So why suddenly that business is occurring? And I, and perhaps too, you could also, um, my second question is since you were on the board of Bicky Bike, if you could please tell me, uh, who appointed the, um, the, the board, Bicky Bike, since you were a member also? Because I contacted the Honolulu, um, bike organization. They're the biggest bike organization on the whole island. And they were not invited to be on the board. I love Bicky, don't get me wrong, but I am concerned about that. Thank you, sir.
Well, as of now, that board is disbanded. So the city is now, uh, responsible for operating Bicky. Oh, I, in terms of why the bicycle league, they always worked closely with, uh, Bicky Bike. I was involved in this effort actually before Bicky was created. We were hoping to get much more of this being more of a community involvement. I don't know why they specifically were not asked. I was not the chair. I was only a member. I would certainly have invited, been happy to have been on the board. But as it is, the, uh, the board is not. Original? I wasn't on the board, sorry. There was a gap in my involvement.
You have something quickly, Greg?
It's very quick. I don't, I don't want to go into the back and forth this evening, Rick, but, you know, you did email me something suggesting I change my testimony, which I would never do if I have valid testimony that I stand behind. I submitted some additional testimony today. I, I most likely won't be able to participate in, in the meeting tomorrow because of the candidate forum I'm hosting. But I will say that I'm not the only one that's had concerns with your lobbying efforts or, or registering. And Civil Beat actually did a story where you were, uh, mentioned back in twenty seventeen. And you mentioned, oh, I had this, this registration on my desk for six months and it has to have an affidavit and I forgot about it. So you were here in August. You clearly said how important it is to register as a lobbyist. You clearly said that, um, you know, it has to be done for, you know, specific reasons and to follow all the procedures. And you clearly said you weren't registered for Bill fifty on the thirteenth of August. And yes, on eight fourteen, you went and registered after the fact. Bill fifty had already been out there for quite a little, little bit of time, I guess. I, I'm supportive of the less festivals. I'm not, you know, anti Bill fifty. I'm anti Bill fifty the way it's written. I'm also anti, um, doing things improperly. So I, I would just implore you to look at what we're saying. We're trying to make sure that it's done properly. If you want to procedurally do something properly, follow the rules. That's all we're saying. Even when you attend these meetings, when there's something on agenda, it needs to be clear what you're presenting on agenda. So again, sunshine law rules come into play. I'll stop there. We'll have more discussion about this in the future. We just want to make sure there's a fair and even playing field for everyone. And you are on the board of Aloha Festivals and you are involved in these festivals. And you, you know, it's excluding others that are interested to maybe do something. And if it's a safety issue, well, to maybe do something. And if it's a safety issue, well, it parades, then it's a safety issue also. So, you know, I'm sorry, but for everything you have in, in street closures. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. I'd like to move on to the next presentation because we're running out.
May I ask a question, please, Chair?
You, you've asked a lot of questions. Anything new?
Not to Rick. Ask a question to Rick, please.
Point of order? What's point of order?
Sunshine Law is that everyone is allowed to speak at least once on every topic. Thank you, sir.
Go ahead. Thank you. You talk about respect. I think you need to respect every resident who's here at the meeting. Okay. Not those outside. Point of order? Let me ask one question to you, Rick. What is the point of order?
Having a, having a board member, um, interacts directly with a resident, um, and making these comments is actually not allowed. It's not, so please try to maintain decorum.
Thank you very much.
No, I'd like to respond to that. I'm tired of this. You call point of order. I don't know where your standing is. This gentleman has addressed the same issue repeatedly tonight.
Chair, I'm going to make a point of order right now. The, I'm sorry, and you need to rule on this. The, the gentleman is a member of the public. He has a right to ask Mr. Egg a question and nobody should be interrupting him while he's speaking. Also, also, excuse me, I'm speaking. I have the, I have the chairs.
Okay. You've made your point.
I'm, I'm still speaking. I'm still speaking. I'm sorry. Let me finish my statement. I'm, I had the floor. He acknowledged me. I, I, he acknowledged me. Okay. He looked at me and acknowledged me. I'm, I'm really tired of that, member Jacob. You continue to do that. Please, if I could finish my statement with my point of order. The point of order is decorum and she didn't, member, member Henske did not get your attention. We did, she didn't, and she was interrupting the member of the public. That needs to stop. That needs to stop.
Charlie, make your quick, make your statement. We've heard it four times tonight. Go ahead.
Well, you'll hear it a fifth time. I meant to say anything at all, Rick. Rick, uh, the issue of trash pickup, uh, in Waikiki beginning at 3:00 AM, as you know, impacts visitors as severely as it impacts residents. An August 28th email from Council Chair Tommy Waters' office to a Waikiki resident said, quote, "We also note specifically that regulations on private refuge collection hours are currently not supported by," end of quote, followed by a list of organizations, including the Waikiki Improvement Association. In effect, that communication is passing the shame of this issue on to you and your organization. Here's my question. Is Chair Waters correct in making that statement? Or does the council member owe you and your organization an apology in stating the Waikiki Improvement Association does not support regulations on private refuge collection hours?
That's correct. At this point, we don't have a, we do not have a position.
Well, then the Chair Waters owes your organization an apology. They say you do.
We have no position. So no position means we are not supporting any additional regulation. I do want to say that I, I understand and I really sympathize with your position. As you know, I talked to you about this when we first started talking about it. Uh, it's a very, and Chair Waters, to his credit, he has tried to solve the problem. Senator Moriwaki has tried to solve the problem. It's a difficult situation because of, of just the, uh, details and the economics. Believe me, if, if they could have gotten these things changed by now, they would have. So I'm, I'm not sure what the answer is. Uh, in the short term, there may not be an answer, but I, I think in the long term.
You may have the answer to this question.
New move towards.
Is Chair Waters receiving support from you and the Waikiki Improvement Association about this issue?
I stand by, I already answered. We do not have a position on legislation.
Okay. Anything else, Rick? Saying nothing. Thank you, Rick. Okay. We have a very important briefing from RAP. Is that what it is, RAP? Yes. Uh, Senator, uh, Governor's Office coordinated to have experts on this subject and will hear our presentation, I hope.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. Um, I'm Mary Alice Evans. I'm the Director of the State Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. And with me tonight is Michael Kane, the Administrator of the Office of, uh,
Office of Conservation and Coastal Lands, a regulatory branch of DLNR.
And the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development is part of D-Bed, stands for Department of Business Economic Development and Tourism. And, uh, Senator Moriwaki appropriated funds to our office several years ago to conduct a community engagement process on how to, um, plan adaptations for sea level rise, uh, along Waikiki. And so we entered into a contract with the University of Hawaii's Community Design Center, which has a very active program of working with communities to come up with ideas. These are, this is a conceptual approach. It's not, not technical, uh, drawings or, uh, any, um, it's, it's a way of getting a range of ideas, uh, out on the table for the community to react to. Uh, so that, uh, project, uh, phase one finished up. Shall I wait until, uh, until the? I live in Waimea. We don't get that all the time. You guys look so completely just undismayed by that, that I presume that that's not a unusual occurrence. Okay. Um, and I don't know if you've had a presentation on the, uh, results of the phase one project. Uh, well, I'll give you a quick summary. Uh, the, uh, sea level rise is going to be something that's with us for centuries. Uh, no matter how wonderful an effort Hawaii does in reducing our greenhouse gas emissions, uh, we live in a planet of eight billion people. We're a state of 1.4 million people. Uh, we are going to have to live with the results of the entire planet's, uh, greenhouse gas emissions. And that probably means sea level rise for a long time. However, uh, what we think is going to be maybe an approach that the community could accept is one that, uh, does, uh, adaptation, uh, gradually as sea level rise occurs rather than trying to put in 10-foot walls or six-foot walls, uh, before they're needed. But on the other hand, we have to look, you know, forward over a number of decades and figure out what a phased adaptive approach might be that would be community acceptable, uh, and be ready to institute, uh, adaptive, uh, interventions as needed because, uh, we want to protect Waikiki and its beach, which is part of our economy and a very important part of our economy and its residents, which are an important part of our community, all 22,000 of you. And so, uh, Senator Moriwaki, uh, is working to get a phase two project, uh, funded. And I hope we'll be part of that. And I hope you'll be part of that as well. Open to questions.
Questions? Go ahead.
Yeah. Thanks both of you for showing up. I think this is, um, the same project I should know, uh, that UH, that Michael Brown, myself, Catherine Henskey went to some presentations. Fascinating. Um, overall, just for the board and the public, it forces us to see, to, to bring in real terms what the issues are, but it also opens up some, some really creative possibilities of what our world's going to look like. Um, specifically in our neighborhood and throughout the world, um, in a very short time. So anyway, it's fascinating. Um, they did good work. Uh, I, I don't really have any, any comments other than this was a unique type of project. Uh, we enjoyed participating in it. I know Michael Brown is an urban planner. I, I love the stuff. So, uh, good project. I, I really appreciate Senator, uh, delving into this, getting the funding and taking this issue seriously because it's opens this dialogue. And, uh, I hope this, these types of efforts continue. Both boots on the ground, projects, implementation that we know need to get done, but also looking into the future of possibilities and really addressing this, um, climate change issue, um, non-politically, just realistically and looking at and getting stuff done. So anyway, good effort. Please continue. I'm sure you'll be, be involved with this in future. Thanks.
Catherine?
I'd like to thank you also for coming. Um, the three of us spent a lot of time listening and, and watching. And I'd like to compliment UH on the fact that they've got the students doing this. What a tremendous brain effort and what an admirable thing that we have in the youth here in Hawaii. There's so much to look forward to. Thank you.
No, thank them. It's great. Other questions? Go ahead.
First of all, can I tell you, thank you, thank you, thank you about let's not build this six to 10-foot cement wall if it's not needed, if we can find other solutions. I mallow. I appreciate that so much. Um, my second thing, I, I'm so sorry. I'm a little confused because there's like the Army Corps and then there's the watershed group and then there's you and then there's complete streets. Are these groups working together? Is it collaborative or would you be able to explain that a little bit?
Well, let me see if I can deconstruct that a little bit. Um, the project we work on is not an Army Corps project. It was funded by Senator Moriwaki, uh, conducted by the University of Hawaii, both Sea Grant and the, um, Center for Community Design. And , uh, it is, uh, it, it is more of a conceptual planning effort. Um, I think the Corps does more technical studies, uh, but I'm not sure about that because I'm not familiar with the Corps' approach. Uh, complete streets. We're all on, we really want complete streets. Um, but that has nothing to do with the sea level rise project. Yeah. Thank you.
Other questions? John?
Just, uh, observation by somebody who spends three hours in the water every morning by a Waikiki wall, body boarding. I hope you have some good before and after pictures from the last like 10 years because first of all, Queen's Beach used to be a beach. It doesn't exist anymore. Like basically doesn't exist, uh, at all. And now at, at high tide, our pond area for the tourists, uh, by the Waikiki wall, at high tide, there's no beach. And this is something that's happened rapidly. I'm, I'm talking over like the five years that I've lived here. And then when I visited here, it used to be like this big beach. So this is like, I'm assuming that sea level rise, maybe it's something else, but it's very dramatic. Most, most other places in the country is not that dramatic. But it might be a good, uh, visual for you guys to use, uh, proof because it, it exists already.
Hi, um, I'm going to take over from Mary Alice. I can address that. Um, visually, erosion like at places like Queens Surf Beach are dramatic. It's not. Uh, that beach was built in the 1950s, 120 feet out and has been steadily eroding. And by the 1980s, there are front page articles. Queens Surf Beach is now under 80 feet. What are we going to do? I moved here in the nineties, it was 30 feet. And now as you see it, zero. Climate change is a real issue. What we see in Waikiki, Waikiki is a built environment. Uh, we lost the beaches back in the 1930s and they were encouraged. And that's one of the reasons the state comes in, at least periodic, uh, nourishing proposals and projects. Because if we don't, we lose the beach. That's just core development. That's from building sea walls and hardening our shoreline. Climate change will accelerate the problem, of course. But, um, when we saw it Queen's Surf and the other places, it's just core development.
Other questions? I don't see any, but, uh, thank you for being with us tonight. And as this progresses, uh, please let me know. We'll bring you back for project updates, uh, especially after the legislature starts hopefully putting money into this. Go right ahead.
My office, OCL, we're a regulatory agency. We're the cops you have to come through to get your conservation district use permits. However, for the past 15 years, we've been taking the lead on CIP projects in Waikiki, um, conservation projects. As Mary Alice noted, uh, D-Bed is going to be taking over the management of those. We still have some money left at the pot and Senator, Senator Moriwaki has ordered me not to let it lapse. So we only have a couple of million. We're trying to identify projects that would be high impact, high visible and would have a high chance of success. The projects we're moving forward with, one is to work on the swim basins, the Diamond Head and, uh, have a swim basin, do basic sand nourishment, sand management, turn your sand that's currently blocking the swim channel back up onto the beach and recon turn the beach. Uh, that'll be a small scale project. Our hope is we can use a new technology, diver operated pumps. Um, that would be great. Be slightly low impacted and then we can just maintain some of the features with that. We don't know. We'll see how the plans work out. If not, we'll do what they do at Kohona, we'll bring a barge in and just bring the sand back up on the beach. Um, I like the idea of the little diver operating pumps. Uh, secondly, we'll be doing some work at Kohio Beach. Uh, you're familiar with the cement, not the cement, the sandbag grind. Uh, that was put in to do some flanking erosion at the base of the, uh, some of the grinds. And because it was a site where the old Honolulu tavern was, uh, we weren't allowed to rip out floor. There's a cement floor from about 1940 to 1950 bar underneath Kohio Beach. Um, so that was a temporary project group of concept to show that these stub grinds, these small grinds do work to stabilize a beach. We'll look at now replacing the sandbags with something more aesthetics and nicer rocks. And at the same time, there's, um, some crushed rocks at the toe of the groin separating the swim basin. Currently have to clamber over them. Hopefully we can restack those rocks, bring in new ones and improve access. Second area we're looking for is going to be more difficult. This is the Kaveh Vehi sector, um, the area fronting the Sheraton and the Honolulu. Uh, currently investigating potential for doing a small scale beach nourishment project there. Small scale might not be enough. So we have some questions about whether that's enough, but we're still examining that. And I went with Senator Moriwaki last week to examine the Honolulu. And just that, um, and she, um, we have some money to look at, to design proposals to see how we can stabilize that wall and prevent it from beach nourishment. We'll need some kind of that stuff, either a new wall or stabilize that wall. There is not consensus now and who would pay for it, but that's a fight for next year. We'll be back for that.
Jeff?
And I'm sorry, just, just one more clarification for folks. A couple of years ago, didn't, was DLNR issued like a, uh, a blanket EA or EIS for small beach nourishment? My point being that we're not going to be seeing EAs and EISs for every one of these projects. A lot of them have already been in the queue under programmatic form and they will be, the whole point being we can't spend years on an EA. So they'll be implemented more quickly. Am I right or wrong on that, Michael?
Yeah, with some context. Uh, we have a small scale beach nourishment program that allows us to use up to 10,000 cubic yards. Um, there's a lot of like prerequisites for that program to be used. The sand needs to be a certain grade size, needs to match the beach size. Uh, if it matches that, we are allowed to issue a water quality certification, which is a major step. And we already have the EA done. We've done an EA to go up to 20,000 cubic yards. So for perspective, um, under COVID, the big sand pile, that was about 15,000. So for perspective, I'm under COVID, the mid-sand pile, that was about 22,000 cubic yards. That was challenged by some environmental groups, so we're still working through a legal process. But we have an EA up to 20 grand. We don't know how much we can, uh, we'll need to work with the legal challenges to, um, to permit larger projects on a small scale. But 20,000 is not that much. The large projects we've seen in Waikiki would require their own environmental assessments, their own individual permits. Too much information?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Richard Byron. I just wanted, do you all have anything to do with the collapsed wall up by the aquarium and the, and the one that's further down, close to that restaurant over there?
Uh, no, it's not. I can fill you in though. Uh, so the one by the aquarium is actually university property. Um, but because Waikiki's complicated, it's university owns the wall, but the city owns the easement on top. So that wall has been, the breach at that wall has been repaired. Now we're waiting on the city and county to repair the paving stones so it can be opened up. Uh, the collapse of Queen's Surf Beach is much more dramatic, much more significant. The city and county, I know that Tommy Waters has appropriated emergency funds. The permitting for that will probably be my office, but not the actual project manager.
Yeah, sir.
Thank you so much for giving us those, uh, updates. That's fantastic. Once again, I'm a little confused because we have so many people coming in. We have the Waikiki Beach Improvement Association, and then we have, um, I guess now, I didn't realize you were involved too, so it's, it's a little confusing. And my second question is, um, diver-operated pumps, is that what Eversole said was where they're gonna take the sand just off, off of beach and then just move it back up?
Um, correct.
Because my concern is, I mean, you've got, everyone here has built a sandcastle, right? You build a sandcastle, um, if you take the sand right at the base of the sandcastle, it's just gonna slide right back into that moat. So what you do is usually take sand further away. So my concern is that we're just gonna constantly have sand shifting right back down from that spot where we took the sand.
Yeah, that's, that is dynamic.
But so, uh, that's why, um, before I actually look back, um, since 1950, the DLNR has been doing sand dumps where they actually get the sand from another area. Because you're right, sand does move, and us like constantly circulating the sand back on is, it's, doesn't seem as cost-effective as having a barge come in. And my other concern is, um, the discrepancy with, when, before when the DLNR was in charge of the sand dumps, there was a schedule that all the beaches received sand. And ever since, unfortunately, uh, it was, DLNR kinda handed over the responsibility to the Waikiki Beach Improvement Association, it seems like all of the, um, improvements have been to Kohio Beach and to the Royal Vine. So how are you guys, like?
We, we've never had a schedule. Um, like, sand nourishment was done between the 1930s and 1950s, maybe the 1980s. Then there's about a 20-year gap of Waikiki's mapping. So that's when we became involved with the Kohio Beach project. But that, again, it was a bit under our wheelhouse, but we were assigned it and we did it. Um, in general, it's pretty easy, everything. Like, I have a shoreline, conservation district development. If you want to do, Atlantic Conservation District, it comes to my office, and we make a recommendation to our board.
Just a very quick question. You just mentioned a, was it a 20-to-30-year gap where there was no beach maintenance?
Correct. We, um, let's see if I can remember what it said. If you go to dlnr.hawaii.gov/occl, uh, you'll find a page where we dedicated the history of Waikiki sand nourishment. And we went back to the 1900s, so there, everything's by the lens.
Okay. Do you know approximately when the 20-to-30-year span was? Just roughly?
I know. I wanna say 1980s to 2000s.
Okay.
Roughly, I mean, that's.
Okay. Thank you. Just curious.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Use the microphone. Right. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is some administrative board business. In order to look at our major projects, we've always asked Jeff Mers and Michael Brown to review the technical aspects and bring us, uh, their opinions. I'd like to have a motion to continue that. Motion? Yeah. This motion and a second. Okay, discussion?
So.
She made the motion, I think.
Oh, no, no.
Catherine made the motion. You made the second. Okay. Okay, discussion, yes.
Um, so one of my concerns is, I've been asking, I, I, it's wonderful that Maris volunteered to be the delegate, but, and our meeting last year, you actually signed to him to review the EIS for the bridge, and I've been asking now for months if you could please report what his opinion was on it. And we still haven't had it, and quite frankly, like, I understand you want to have, uh, these people be delegates. However, the point is, is that when they go and they're not reporting back to us, that's actually a violation of the neighborhood plan. So I know you've said that, you know, even though, um, Mr. Brown is a landscape architect and Mr. Maris is, um, gosh, I can't remember, it's, uh, I, my concern is that it would be better to have the person come directly and present to us versus having someone else go who doesn't come back and report what was in the meeting. That's my concern.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussions? There's, is that a call for the, call for the vote? Yeah, Greg, I'll give you a few. Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. There, there's no call for the vote when we, we are still discussing, so, um, this gets used way too often. It's not a thing when people wanna discuss what's going on.
Thank you.
I, I share the concern, uh, that Sarah has. Um, if we're gonna appoint someone to delegate to go to meetings, then when they go to a meeting, we should know that they went to a meeting, and we should know that, um, they're at that meeting and what they're reporting. So they should come back and report something to us regarding the information that they've obtained. Without that, as Sarah said, we, we are left in the dark. You're just assigning someone or two people to different, you know, or three, actually, I think, in this case, because we have another one coming up, to go to these meetings. That might be beneficial to, to them, knowing something, even in decision-making when we have to have further discussions, but the rest of the board doesn't know. So if we're gonna continue down that path, I have a concern. I don't recall any summary reports from anybody on any of these meetings, and I'm actually aware of, um, even you, Chair Finley, you're attending some of these meetings with them, a couple of them. I, I do see some reports and some meeting minutes, so I do follow things outside. But I only find those when I dig, and I really don't have time to dig. So I would thank, you know, thank you and, and the board to really respect all of the board. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay. Raise of hands. All those in favor, show of hands. Hold up a second. Oppo, you got it? Opposed?
Chair, um, point of order, could you take a, could this be a, a vote by, you know, not, not a vote the way you're doing it? Everybody needs to state who their yes or nay, yea or nay, yes or no.
I took advice from our NA. NA, do a roll-call vote. Thank you.
Uh, when they call your name, please say yes, no, or abstain. Anderson? Uh, Boyak? Oh, yeah, can you say in the mic also? So, hey, also saying in the mic, yeah, just, so we just keep it, yeah. Okay, Boyak?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Brown's not here. Here. Uh, Dabs? Oh, oh, can you say it to the mic? Sorry.
Yes.
Uh, Stephanie Easley?
Yes.
Uh, Melissa Pellet?
Yes.
Okay, Finley? Uh, Henskey?
Yes.
Uh, Daniel Jacob? Ken Jacob?
Yes.
Jeff? Mers?
Yes.
Um, Greg? Thank you?
No.
Uh, Mark Howard?
Yes.
Sarah Worth?
Sorry, but no.
That's 11 yes, uh, 2 no, uh, 0 abstain. Uh, this item is, it passes.
Next on the agenda is asking Ken Jacob if he'll continue to be with the Citizens Advisory Committee? Are you still wanting to do that?
I'll continue to be happy to do it. I'm still learning a lot. I, uh, had eye surgery like the day of the last meeting. Was unable to see my computer, so missed it, but, uh, yeah, I'll continue to do it.
Okay. Is there a motion for Ken to continue being the CAC representative?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Discussion? Nope. Doesn't look like we, is there anybody who objects to this? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, Ken. Uh, the third is for Ken to continue to be the timekeeper. Ken, can you continue to be timekeeper, or is that? Okay. 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 Thank you. Any discussion on Ken being the timekeeper? Okay. Do I have a second to the motion? Sarah is seconding the motion. Are there any objections? I see no objections. Any abstentions? Okay, by unanimous, sent. Ken will be the timekeeper, and we have to discuss the issues at a later date. Okay, approval of minutes. I added something in here. I don't know if anybody read this or not, but if you have extensive corrections to minutes, I would like you to send them to our neighborhood assistant so he can send them to each board member so we'll have the opportunity to review them before we vote on them. I didn't get anything this month, but I, I'll do a pass on this month because this is a last-minute thing that I don't know if you actually read the agenda or not. So if you have objections, not objections, if you have corrections to a, to the minutes, I would like you to, uh, submit them to our neighborhood assistant, at least allowing him 48 hours to get them out to the board members so they may review them. Since I didn't do that, uh, I've got August and September on the agenda to, uh, to accept this month. Uh, Greg, I know you had concerns about last month. Did you have an opportunity to write them all down and send them forward?
I, I didn't. Uh, I mentioned earlier, I, I just lost my father, um, within the last couple of weeks, and it's been a rough ride, so I have not, and I just didn't see that today, actually, prior to coming to the meeting.
I, I thought, I thought that might be the case, and I apologize.
That's okay.
My condolences on your loss.
Thank you.
Can you have that by our next meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, and, uh, so I'm gonna defer the minutes until the next meeting when everyone has an opportunity to, uh, submit what they feel are, uh, realistic changes to the minutes, or whatever you wanna call them. And again, I, I think that will work out well for us so that we can all see that, uh, knowing that we have to vote on any changes to the draft. Okay, uh, moving on. Jeff, have you got anything for Sub District One? No? Julian, I'm sorry. I was reading her last name and I went, who's that? Okay, no, no, nothing from District Two. Catherine, anything from District Three? I know you had that concern about the food truck that you brought up earlier. Anything else?
No, but I did wanna caution everybody to be very careful when they're celebrating Halloween in Waikiki. It gets very crazy and people do weird things, so be careful and have a great Halloween.
Okay. From the chair, I apologize to everyone for allowing order and decorum to escape me tonight. Uh, we'll, in future meetings, we will try to do a better job. And having said all of that, uh, meeting is adjourned. Help us put away the tables and chairs.